Good evening, we have the Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, November the first, 2022. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Holly to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda for tonight. Anyone virtually? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? I just want to announce, so we will toast our town hall meeting on Wednesday, November the sixteenth, and that will be at six o'clock at Oconee County Civic Center. Meeting will be open for both in-person attendance as well as virtual. You can visit our website on details to connect the meeting via Zoom. With that, we have approval of amendments for our regular meeting on October fourth and our dinner sitting meeting on October twenty fifth.
Make a motion to approve both October fourth and October twenty fifth as submitted.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we're moving to our hearing and actions on zoning matters. Our first one will be rezon OIP. P twenty-two dash zero one eight four is Westminster Christian Academy, B one, R one, and AG to OIP, five point five acres. This is at eleven eighty-five South Bishop Farms Parkway. Also, P twenty-two dash zero one eight five at sixteen forty New High Shoals Road. And also a special use along with this one for P twenty-two dash zero one five four. This is to expand the campus in the newly acquired site and revise a special use permit on the existing campus of forty-three point four two acres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is a rezon P twenty-two zero one eight four and one eight five and special use P twenty-two zero one five four. It's located just outside of Watkinsville on New High Shoals and Bishop Farms Parkway South. This is the aerial showing the three subject parcels. And this is an aerial showing the designation of the proposed zoning. Let me go back to that. I'll point out, this is the proposed OIP portion, and this would be the proposed AG portion. It's currently zoned AG, R one, and B one. And it's located in the suburban neighborhood character area as well as the community village character area. And again, the request is rezon the property from AG, R one, and B one to OIP. So you'll notice on the rezon map, we're taking a portion, we're taking all of B one, a portion of the R one, and a portion of the AG to go to OIP. In order to expand the campus and the school, including new buildings, recreational areas, and drop off and pickup. And then there's a request, that was for the the OIP portion, the AG portion would remain to the to the west there. The this portion would remain AG. And then there's a special use for that AG portion to allow for a private school, and they currently have a special use for this location. This is just a modification to the previous. This is the concept plan that you have in your package showing the proposed expansion. A slightly larger version showing tennis courts, classrooms, drop-off area, and the access road. The current architectural images, these are buildings that are there at this time. And staff recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Number four, site lighting shall be fully oriented oriented towards the interior of the site, so as not to impose glare or objectional light levels on adjacent public roads and the neighboring residential properties. Light levels shall be less than one foot candle at all property lines. The use of central loudspeakers and public addresses and shall be prohibited outside of normal daytime operating hours of the school. No outdoor recreation or entertainment operations shall be allowed between the hours of eleven and eight. No dumpsters or trash receptacles shall be emptied between seven PM and seven AM. Dumpsters and trash receptacles shall be located where they are not visible from adjacent properties and shall be adequately screened from view from all streets. Number eight, a twenty-five foot wide screening buffer shall be constructed between any proposed parking area or athletic field, which joins the residential use. Said buffers shall be a mix of evergreen trees and shrubs with a minimum height of six feet at the time of planning. Number nine, a school zone shall be established on New High Shoals Road using flashing school beacons. The flashing school beacon shall be installed in accordance with Oconee County standards at the owner's expense. Ownership and maintenance responsibilities of the school beacon shall be conveyed to Oconee County along with any other improvements within the right way. Planting Commission recommended approval subject to staff conditions on all three cases.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Joseph Bates of Smith Planning Group, and I'll be speaking on behalf of what WCA is an applicant. Jared Clark, the WCA head of school is unable to attend tonight. He wishes he could be here, but he's at the conference out of town. Thank you for staff helping us with this request, answering our questions. The way that was underlying zoning was set up wasn't what we initially were thinking, but we kind of worked through this process really with the goal to minimize impacts to the single-family neighborhood to the north and then the commercial along Bishop Farms Parkway. WCA accepts the conditions of the the approval as outlined by staff. I believe most of those conditions and maybe all of them are holdovers from the 2017 approved special use plan. I'd like to briefly share the reasoning behind the new campus master plan and this request. In 2020, Smith Planning Group with with WCA prepared some site construction plans and had those priced. And we discovered a few things. One, the inflation had increased the site infrastructure cost by about a million based on the original contractor's pricing and then in 2020. And then we realized that the 2017 plan didn't really allow for phasing of the site infrastructure. And so began to look at ways to change the site to be able to meet WCA's immediate need, which is classroom space. And so that kind of took us on a series of different concepts and different plans. The big ticket items for the infrastructure costs of the original plan was we had one storm facility. We had multiple stream crossings. We had a private lift station and then the improvements on New High Shoals Road. And so we looked at ways to phase those, like I said, and the one that kind of came to this, the forefront was the private lift station. And there is a county lift station on the corner of the Aquatic Center property, or actually the the parcel that is included in this rezon that WCA purchased. And we started looking and realized that we could gravity sewer new buildings along New High to that that existing county lift station, which I understand is one of the most underused lift stations in the county. And so that's kind of how we began to to look at redesigning this. Realized this parcel on the corner is for sale, and so ended up purchasing that and seemed to make a lot of sense for adding a second entrance. You know, like I said about the rezoning and approach, it looks a little bizarre, but again, we're we're trying to minimize impacts to the existing neighbors around us with our rezoning. And and not may have any impacts for the commercial on Bishop Farms Parkway as they develop in the future. In summary, we believe this plan is an improvement from the 2017 master plan. It'll allow for more tree conservation. It will develop that vacant land on the corner of New High Shoals Road and Bishop Farms Parkway, which has been had a little bit of an erosion control problem for for quite a long time. It'll allow for phasing, like I said, which will allow WCA then to install that second entrance, which they need to mitigate some of the traffic out there as soon as possible. Build the internal circulation they need for drop off and pickup stacking. And it'll expedite WCA's ability to build classrooms and really shifting the development more along the New High Shoals Road corridor. Further away from the Thornwood, single-family property and kind of along the border where we believe it makes more sense. So thank you for your, thank you for your time, consideration. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for either rezon or the special use? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against either rezon or the special use? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this hearing and open up for any questions from Commissioners. Here now, we're entertaining a motion on rezon P twenty-two dash zero one eight four.
I'll be glad to make the motion. Do they need to have the conditions for each one?
Yes.
They are included. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve rezon P two-two dash zero one eight four Westminster Christian Academy, B one, R one, and AG to OIP. Plus or minus five point five acres. South Bishop Farms Parkway. And then I'll make a motion.
We're gonna do them separate. I got messed up one time. We tried to do mine. Here, a motion and a second to approve rezon request, P twenty-two dash zero one eight four with nine conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P two-two dash zero one eight five Westminster Christian Academy, B one, R one, AG. Plus or minus thirty-seven point eight seven acre, sixteen four New High Shoals Road.
Second.
Here, a motion second to approve rezon P twenty-two dash zero one eight five with nine conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve special use P two-two dash zero one five four Westminster Christian Academy to expand the campus. And then newly acquired site and revise a special use permit on existing campus. Plus or minus forty-three point three acres, sixteen four New High Shoals Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve special use P twenty-two dash zero one five four with nine conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is special use P twenty-two dash zero one seven six Fred Simonton, third. This is to develop a cell phone tower in the AG zoning district. Point three three zero six acres on Fambro Bridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is special use P twenty-two zero one seven six Fred Simonton, the third owner. Located located in southern end of the county off of Fambro Bridge Road. This is the aerial of the subject parcel C zero nine zero zero six. It's currently zoned AG in the agricultural preservation character area. And the request is a special use to construct a cell tower in the AG zoning district with a landscaping waiver request due to the remote agricultural and rural location. This is the overall site plan that you have in your packet, slightly enlarged, showing the lease area approximately six hundred feet from Fambro Bridge Road toward the center of the parcel. Staff recommends conditional approval with our two standard conditions. Number three, approval of landscape buffer waiver due to the remote agricultural and rural location of the site. Planting Commission also recommends approval with the same conditions.
Very good. Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening. Chad Cordill representing AT&amp;T and Fred Simonton. So we did go to great lengths to find a location that would, you know, be in an area that doesn't adversely affect the character of the surrounding properties. We started with a two hundred and fifty-foot cell tower lattice in design and dropped down to a hundred and ninety-nine-foot monopole with a base of about six feet in width and tapered up to the top. And so it's obviously surrounded by a lot of, you know, timberland ag. And the purpose of it is to fill the gap between Coney National Forest, Stevens and Maxi, Georgia, and to the west to Farmington, Georgia, and to Watkinsville, of course, and all along Greensboro Highway. So with that, I mean, we're always trying to co-locate, but in this case, there there weren't any available towers nearby that would allow us to do so. So appreciate a vote for approval. We're good with the staff comments and conditions. And I'm open to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Thank you. Your Simonson, you need, what do you like to speak? You're good? It's up to you. Thank you. David Osborne.
Hello. I'm a homeowner on Fambro Bridge Road and back live almost directly across from the proposed cell tower. And I wanted to come and give my support because we really need better cell coverage in that in that area. I have a thirteen-year-old daughter and wife, and oftentimes I can't even communicate with them when I'm away from home. And so I worry about their safety, but as he said, that part of our county just does not have good cell coverage, and so I'm supportive for that reason. At the last meeting when we addressed this, another homeowner from Fambro Bridge Road came and she said that she was against it because it was swallow tail kite, Mississippi kite, and paragon falcon nesting habitat. Well, I'm a wildlife biologist at the University of Georgia. I've been there thirty years. Birds are not my specialty, but I do know enough about those species to know that they do not, they did not breed in this part of Georgia. And they do not use mid-rotational pine plantations as breeding habitat. So I just wanted to mention, I didn't get a chance to to say that during the last meeting, so I just wanted to.
Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Any questions from Commissioners?
Got one. What cell company will be using this? So the commitment right now is new singular wireless.
If you'd come to the microphone.
So the application specifically for new singular wireless PCS LLC, otherwise known as AT&amp;T, that's the initial commitment. And of course, it is, there is a gap in coverage. Personally, I have a Verizon. And Verizon's not really good there either. I do know that they were snooping around a few years ago, think trying to locate a place, and I don't think it worked out for them, but typically, I mean, this is all public knowledge. We've already got our FCC and our FAA approvals. That's public knowledge. And the carriers are oftentimes doing searches on that database to see where there's new towers or approved so that they can, you know, follow suit and co-locate. Because they're pretty much all the other carriers want to co-locate as well.
That will be my next question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Any other questions? We entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve special use P twenty-two dash zero one seven six Fred Simonton, third, to develop a cell tower in the AG zoning district. Plus or minus point three three acres along from Bush Road, vacant with three conditions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve special use P twenty-two dash zero one seven six with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is rezon P twenty-two dash zero one seven seven. This is Westminster Presbyterian Homes Incorporated, AR to OIP. It's four acres at ten thirty Wellbrook Road. Also, there's a request for a variance on the same location for variance number P twenty-two dash zero two zero eight. Is that it?
Thank you. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezon P twenty-two zero one seven seven and variance P twenty-two zero two zero eight. Located on Hog Mountain and Wellbrook Road. This is the aerial of the subject parcel C zero two zero seven eight. It's currently zoned AR in the civic center character area. And again, the request is to rezon from AR to OIP in order to develop a medical office complex. And the variance is to reduce the required buffer, the side buffer from twenty-five feet to zero feet adjacent to the AR property. This is the subject concept plan submitted with the application, slightly larger version. You'll notice the request for the variance is from this property line to approximately here. This is the AR zone parcel. And it's hard to tell on the concept plan, but there is a sewer easement right through there, twenty-foot sewer easement. That would be difficult to plant any type of buffer in as we require those to be free and clear. But this is the concept plan that you have in your packets. These are the architectural images that are submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval subject to our three standard conditions. And for the variance, staff recommends that it does meet the necessary conditions to grant the variance with the one standard condition.
Thank you. Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman, the fourteen-hundred Saxon Road. As Mr. Herring mentioned, this property is at ten thirty Wellbrook Road, former corner of Wellbrook and Hog Mountain. The, I think the, what you guys saw show that it's owned by Westminster Presbyterian Homes. It's actually, they have transferred that into a another LLC, which is PHGA Properties, which is and then this came, this question came up at at Planting Commission, and Amory and I also had a discussion about it. Westminster Presbyterian Homes is nonprofit. They don't pay property taxes. PHGA Properties is a for-profit entity. This project would be a property, a taxpaying property, so they've already moved it into this taxpaying entity, so it will it will pay property taxes moving forward. And this use will be a for-profit use. The existing zoning is AR. We're requesting to go to OIP or medical office complex with up to two buildings, up to twenty-eight thousand square feet. They have had some conversations with a medical group already. They don't have a signed deal yet, but they've got they've got somebody that's really interested in coming there. We we tried to set this up so that access would be only from Hog Mountain Road. You know, most y'all remember back when Presbyterian Homes came through, the the people that lived on Wellbrook Road really didn't want access on their road, so we we're not showing any access to Wellbrook Road. We are showing interparcial connectivity with the adjacent property that that you guys zoned last year to B two, I think. And we are also through conversations with Mr. Herring, we were asked to, I think it sounds like the county wants to, at some point in time, have a a multi-use path, I guess, or wide, I don't know if it's called a path or sidewalk, all the way down Hog Mountain. So we're 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 showing adding that along our front edge, which basically be a lot wider, almost double width sidewalk. So we're willing to go ahead and put that in. We are asking for variance on the on the right-hand side as Mr. Herring. Yeah, as Mr. Herring mentioned, there's a sewer line that comes down that property line with a twenty-foot easement, which makes it difficult to to have a buffer there because you can't plant in that easement. We we are set back far enough that the piece of property, the only the the piece of property to the northeast is the only one that would require buffer today just because it it is still zoned AR. Most likely that property at some point in time probably pretty soon becomes a commercial piece of property. It's not, didn't have a residential use on it, just happened to be zoned AR still. At at the point in time that it becomes commercial, there wouldn't be a requirement for a buffer anyway, so we're asking to remove that now. And by doing so, we're also adding a multi-use path through this development so that the people from Presbyterian Homes could come through and continue on down towards Butler's Crossing, you know, once once that's continued down. The staff has recommended approval. Planting Commission also recommended approval. And I'm here tonight to ask you guys to to also approve this, and I'm open for any questions y'all might have.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon or the variance? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against the rezon or the variance? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and open up to any questions.
Question from Mr. Herring. I'm certainly in support of the reason of the the access of that whole intersection. You and I've talked about it. It caused me a bit of heartburn. Could 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 you kind of give us a bigger picture? I know this shows, you know, the conditions called for them to make certain improvements to right away to be determined. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what, you know, the the car wash comes out there across from the entrance to the back entrance to the racetrack. And I think there's a no left turn era at that. That's just a suggestion, I assume. I've seen people turn left out of there. They're taking lives in their own hands. But the reason we did for for Mr. Thornton is next door to it. And it called for some added improvements to the right away. So give me a big picture. We got all that. You got across the street, comes into the Ivy property. And what what's long-term?
Well, and and should the the older county state bank building go through its full redevelopment? There'll be improvements there at four forty-one as well, right? So yeah, we talked about this. So during during the rezon for the smaller portion, the smaller parcel, there were conditions for interparcial access, and you're right, for additional improvements at at that location. Right now, we have a essentially a striped area with a stop condition, trying to prevent those left turns. And so ideally, this road would be extended through this parcel and tie into their driveway. And they showed that interparcial access to facilitate that. Additional improvements will need to be determined at the time of development permitting. We'll go through a full review during their DRC process to see what improvements, if any, would need to be made here. But this this area is subject to change as as parcels develop there.
So is the interconnectivity, is that meaning that the people coming out of car wash will come up to this property to to get out? Or they all three parcels still have their own access?
There would be, I believe there would be a right in, right out here at this location, but there would be the ability to come out and make a full movement at this location. and make a full movement at this location.
Because as, as Mr. Pittman mentioned, that track is currently zoned.
They are, yes.
They are.
There you go.
That's what, fifteen acres?
Something like that, it, it, maybe it's more like seven or eight. You, you, you're, maybe it's, you're, you're three. So, okay, you're almost four, so. So this one's only about four or five acres.
Oh, okay.
But we do anticipate, this is in Civic Center character area, and should you approve it, this would be a commercial location. At which time there would be more improvements that would be required as well.
I mean, I, I don't, since I retire, I don't go that way to work anymore, but it's, it's kind of a pressure point and I just I'm described as a, you ever seen a goat rodeo? Well, that's, that's the goat.
Right, I haven't noticed.
Well, if you ever go to one, you'll know. I just want to make sure, I mean, I'm not opposed to the reason, but I just know that's going to be a pressure point.
And I do think there's additional improvements that probably will need to be made at this location, not just from this project, but just from a system standpoint, so. Public Works will be involved with that and helping figure that out.
Not on state, not county road, even though we still call highway two oh seven, it's, it's a county road. Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman, when y'all anticipated everything there was still to be done tonight?
Well, like I mentioned, they, they've been in conversation with, with a medical group, now they don't have a signed agreement. If they were to sign this agreement, I think it could be something that they probably start next year, I mean, it'd take a little bit of time to get through permitting. If that deal falls through, obviously, you know, it could lag a little bit later, but I mean, their intention is to, for this to move forward in a, in a pretty timely manner. I mean, they're, you know, the medical needs have, have grown so much in, in the county and we've all talked about it, I mean, E and T of Athens is coming in across the road right now at La Vista and, you know, people are chomping at bits to get over here, so, and especially with Presbyterian Homes there. They've got a lot of patients right next door, so.
Any other questions? Will entertain a motion on the rezone?
I'll make a motion to approve P twenty-two dash zero one seven seven as stated with the three conditions, so.
Have a motion and second to approve rezone P twenty-two dash zero one seven seven with three conditions, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Entertain a motion for the variance.
Make a motion to approve P twenty-two zero two zero eight Westminster Presbyterian Homes to reduce their required buffer from twenty-five to zero adjacent to AR. Plus or minus three twenty-eight acres, Wellbrook Road. With the one condition, so.
Then we have a motion second to approve variance P twenty-two dash zero two zero eight with one condition, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is variance P twenty-two dash zero two one nine for Henry and Sandra Thompson to develop a shed roof from UDC section forty-four one zero dash zero one C two. And UDC table four point one, this is point eight nine acres at eleven seventy-one Windsor Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, this is variance P twenty-two zero two one nine. Located off Windsor Drive. This is the aerial of the subject parcel. It's currently zoned R one in the suburban neighborhood character area, and again, they're requesting a variance from UDC section four ten oh one C two and UDC table four point one to reduce the required minimum rear building setback from forty feet to thirty-one feet and two inches in order to add a roof and an overhang onto the existing attached garage. Adding additional coverage of two hundred and twenty square feet. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets showing the existing structure and the proposed addition to the structure. And staff recommends approval that it does meet all necessary conditions with the one condition.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner? Anybody? Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezone or the variance? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? We'll go ahead and close the public comment portions and open up to any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion on variance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion for variance. P twenty-two dash zero two one nine for Henry and Sandra Thompson to develop a shed roof. Located eleven seventy-one Windsor Drive with one condition, so.
Have a motion second to approve variance P twenty-two dash zero two one nine with one condition, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next time is discussing, consider updating the County County alcohol ordinance, Daniel?
No changes since the last time, this is an ordinance, an ordinance amendment that will accomplish two things. It will create a category of license for the wholesale sale of liquor, which we need because we have restaurants that sell liquor and they have to buy it somewhere. And the second thing it will do is clarify how we measure distances. There was a change in the law a couple of years ago that said the counties have the right to say exactly how they do it and we've selected a method that makes sense and will be consistently applied. And I think Holly and I will both be happy to have this adopted. So I'd ask for you to adopt the ordinance tonight, ordinance amendment.
Any questions, Commissioners? Do we have any public comment on this item? Anyone virtually? We entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to
Here we have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next time is discuss and consider OBP GM HVAC replacement, Lisa?
Good evening, what you have before you is a request to approve the bid that we received on October eleventh in regards to replacement of the OBP GM HVAC, these are the two large outdoor units. This bid also includes correcting an issue we've had since it was built and that it will also have a separate unit for the fitness area upstairs. So it'll allow both units to work more efficiently in that area. It will be built in, basically installed in two phases so that we don't have to close the whole facility at one time. The total for the bid, which would go to mechanical repair services, our low bid is two seventy-one six two seven. We did budget some for FY twenty-three, so the total budget amendment request is one eighty-seven two two five. The add alternate, which included some fans and some other electrical increased capacity, that is not included in this bid at this time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Anyone virtually? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the HVAC estate.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? That will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor? We do not have need of executive session, Commissioner Saxon?
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned.